Good evening, everyone.
Good evening.
Adequate notice of this meeting, as required by the Open Public Meetings Act, was provided through the posting, mailing, and filing of the annual notice of the regularly scheduled meetings of the Town Council on December 11, 2019. The notice was, on that date, posted on the bulletin board in the municipal building, provided to the Westfield leader and the Star Ledger, and filed with the clerk of the town of Westfield. Mayor Brindle, Councilmembers Hapgood...
Here.
Parmally?
Here.
LaGrippo?
Here.
Katz?
Here.
Mackey?
Here.
Contract?
Here.
Dardia?
Here.
Boyce?
Here.
Please rise from the invocation, which will be given by Councilman Contract, and then remain standing for the salute to the flag.
Today, may we be open to others' ideas and beliefs, respectful of our differences, not threatened by them. May we grow in understanding of our own motives, knowing that people often act out of their own fears. May we be a force for replacing fear with insight, helping us all to be patient and kind as we talk. Strength, real strength can always find compromise. Working together, may we find a common ground, enable us to move forward with a shared purpose. May we see what is truly important and unites us, focusing on that to banish roadblocks of ego and fear. Today, may we be open to others' ideas and beliefs. Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Councilman Contract. Good evening, everyone, and thanks to all who are here tonight, and in person, and online. Mayor Brindle is unable to be here this evening, so I'm going to do my best to do her mayor's update. As the mayor mentioned in the last meeting, as it relates to the Rialto, and you might have read in recent press, we continue to seek a funding partner to realize the full potential of the Rialto, as a performing arts center, and maybe some other arts facilities, because the current marketplace does not appear to support the space reopening strictly as a movie theater. As the town is not looking to take on the full financial responsibility of running the theater, ongoing conversations continue about the potential funding avenues that would make the most sense in terms of investment viability and versatility. In terms of the coffee kiosk update at the South Avenue train station, there've been some inquiries about the timeline on reopening the kiosk, and I'd like to provide an update there. An exterior kiosk renovation is almost complete. The roof is now on, as of Friday, and the paint is just remaining on the exterior, but there's some delay in the interior work, because we need to overhaul the electrical system that's out of code, and we also always knew that we were going to have to hook up water. So, the job now is requiring a lot of ongoing coordination between New Jersey Transit, the New Jersey American Water, and PSENG. Our contractor will begin the trenching work and the line installation for both the water and the electricity to the kiosk, but we're dependent upon those utilities to get the final connections in place. So, we're trying to push the process ahead as quickly as we can, and then go out to RFP to secure an operator for the kiosk, so they can bring coffee and maybe some other goodies to the train station. The New Jersey State Chamber of Commerce meeting, the mayor, along with mayors Tedesco and Giblin, recently met with Tom Bracken, the president of the New Jersey State Chamber of Commerce, to learn about their proposed economic master plan, and asked for their vocal support for small businesses, particularly those in walkable downtowns like ours. As the state reevaluates its economic development approach, it's critical that the local mayors continue to work together and advocate for policies that are favorable to our businesses. And then, in New Jersey Transit, since we're always interested in the updates on one-seat ride, there'll be a meeting of the 32 mayors, who are part of the RVL Mayor's Alliance, this Thursday. Speakers will include representatives from the governor's office, Senator Booker, and Congressman Malinowski's office, and also presenting will be officials from New Jersey Transit, including their customer care advocate. Priorities for the meeting are to receive an update on the RVL peak one-seat ride feasibility study, request for a potential of offering one-seat ride weekend service, and an update on New Jersey Transit's effort to improve the overall service and communication. And then, I also want to mention that we are still taking questions and comments at budget@westfieldnj.gov, as we continue in the budget process. Jim, when you come up later, I'll let you remind everybody what the budget meetings are, when we'll be doing the presentation. All that I know is that I have to be here Thursday night for more presentations and a long day on Saturday to wrap things up, so...
Do you want me to do it right now, real quick?
Sure.
Just so, as you mentioned, we have a... The committee continues to meet, been meeting for many, many, many weeks now. So, this Thursday night again, the committee meets, Saturday morning, to kind of get some final formulation. The timeframe from that point on is, the Finance Committee then will be recommending its proposed budget to the council at the March 10 meeting, the conference session. The council has a couple of weeks then to review. By law, the introduction of the budget will be March 24 here in this chamber, as we've done before, the PowerPoint presentation, and then the public hearing on the budget will be scheduled for, I believe it's April 28.
Okay, because there's a month in between.
There's a statutory time frame in between to have that review period, so that's the next few dates, but yes, this Thursday.
So, the important date for the public is March 24.
March 24, yes.
That's when we'll be doing the infamous PowerPoint presentation on the budget.
Yes, that's correct, yep.
Okay, great, thank you. And now, I'd like to turn over this part of the update to Councilwoman Mackey, who's going to give an update on the DWC and Westfield 300.
Hi. I'd like to take a minute to thank outgoing interim director Kathleen Prunty for helping ease us into the process of assessing our needs at the DWC and locating a replacement. And many of you may have read that last night, the DWC Board voted to approve the appointment of Bob Zuckerman to the position of Executive Director, effective March 23. Bob has extensive experience in downtown organizations, special improvement districts, and the Main Street Program. He most recently headed the South Orange Village Center Alliance, and is currently the president of Downtown New Jersey, a statewide professional organization that advocates for downtowns. His vast experience, including business recruitment and serving on the Board of Governors for South Orange Performing Arts Center, innovative thinking, and knowledge of municipal government, made him a natural choice. I am thrilled to welcome him to Westfield, and we are all anxious to get started. In addition, the council will vote tonight on the appointment of four additional members to the DWC Board, following a recent ordinance to approve the expansion by four members. These new members are comprised of Lillian Pien, who is the owner of Akai and a new building owner in town, Roberta Lowe, who is the owner of Acting Out Studio on the south side of Westfield, and the residents are Michael Laplace, who happens to be the first-ever executive director of the Downtown Westfield Corporation, and is a planner for Princeton, and resident Bob Conway, who is the owner of Brownie Points in Summit, and also, for six years, has sat on their version of the DWC. So, the people who are joining are eminently qualified and bring incredible experience and energy, and I think it's going to be a wonderful addition to the Board. As far as Westfield 300, things are really moving along. I hope everybody is following along at westfieldnj.gov/300. Our dedicated volunteer base continues to mobilize and present wonderful ideas and events throughout this milestone year. Just this weekend, we had the honor of attending a colonial dinner with drinks at 16 Prospect, partnered with... It was sold out, the next one is sold out, and look for the waiting list for this summer. It was held in conjunction with the Westfield Historical Society and the Reef House, and Meg Wusti did a wonderful job taking us on a virtual tour of Westfield's taverns and inns throughout the ages. We were treated to a magnificent colonial dinner, and we sampled revolutionary spirits. In addition, our very talented volunteer designer, Jen Willner, who created our logo, has produced some new wonderful iterations that feature things like retail and dining, and I believe even the Westfield Blue Devil will get involved. So, we look forward to seeing those popping up all through the town, and hopefully, we're going to see a lot of residents sporting the merch as well.
Where can we buy our swag?
If you go online, there'll be a link, and I believe that the Chamber of Commerce is going to be taking orders, and you could pick it up right at their office.
Okay, excellent. All right, great. Thank you, Councilwoman Mackey. So, we have two presentations tonight. The first one is from the Green Team, so I'd like to invite Carrie Hansen and Nancy Albanese to come up to the dais. Good evening, ladies.
Hello, hello. So, what we want to talk to you all about tonight is just the second-year launch of the Downtown, the Green Westfield Medallion Program. So, this is the second year? Go ahead.
This is our second year. The first year was very successful. We had 30, over 30 businesses medallions for their sustainability actions. We are launching a similar program this year with some additional items and additional actions that businesses can do, and also increasing the requirements, so they'll need to do additional things in order to gain a medallion, trying to make it a little more challenging for the businesses. It is a free, voluntary program. We don't charge anybody anything. We have a beautiful medallion that we hand out once a week.
Ta-da, ta-da.
It's just like last year, actually, except it's 2020. But we've had a great reaction. People were... Businesses were very positive about it.
Right, exactly. And so, I just want to emphasize two things. One is, this is free and completely voluntary. We've had a very positive reaction to this, so that's helped us up the ante, to make it a little bit harder this year. And finally, I want to acknowledge and say we're very grateful for our partnership with the DWC in promoting this program, and helping us with all the actual steps of getting the medallion, and notifying businesses, and supporting our efforts on that. So, that's the story.
Can you guys just share a little bit of like, what's a typical action a business could take to earn a point, just to bring it to life a little bit more?
Sure. So, we have different requirements for food businesses and regular retail businesses, but for instance, for a food business, one of the actions that they can do is ask a customer if they need a utensil, instead of automatically giving out utensils. So, you've got to actively request something, instead of just automatically being given it, whether or not, you know, if they use non-plastic tasting spoons or stirrers, so bamboo tasting spoons and stirrers. We also...
Do you use an electric vehicle in your business or not? So, we're basically high-level, trying to decrease the use of one-time-use plastic, increase the use of recycling, drive people toward walking, biking, and using electric vehicles.
And bicycles.
Yeah.
No, it's a great program, and I think it's a great example of partnership between the DWC and the Green Team, of really making a difference in sustainability. And honestly, this is what shoppers want, so, you know, we're embracing it, the DWC's embracing it, hopefully, the new executive director will, and we're hoping that a lot more businesses join up. Please, residents, look on the website, and it's westfieldnj.gov/what's-the...
Medallion.
Medallion, so you can look for the list of businesses who qualified last year. We imagine that those same businesses hopefully will qualify this year. Please, please frequent them and thank them, and look for the green medallion in the window.
If you see that medallion in the window, you know, let them know that you noticed.
Right.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Great job.
Thank you very much.
Thank you very much.
And now, I'd like to invite Don Sammet, our town planner, up to the mic. He'd like to give us an update on affordable housing compliance. Don, if you want to bring the mic up here, maybe it's easier to look at...
Up to the table.
I don't know how...
You want to sit?
I don't know whether you want to face the audience or face us.
Um...
Either way, it's fine.
Let's go this way.
Okay, all right.
I'm usually facing that way. This is a nice change of...
All right. We'll go with that today.
Hello, everyone. I'm talking about affordable housing, but, you know, I can say I'm genuinely pleased to be giving you this update, because I'm proud of what we've accomplished. We obtained our final judgment of compliance and repos from the courts in August of 2018, finding that our housing plan was fair to low- and moderate-income households, that it provides an opportunity for the development of workforce housing in the town itself. That judgment is very important for us, because it gives us immunity from so-called builder's remedy lawsuits, or the opportunity for a builder to come in and say, "We're not meeting our affordable housing obligations," and therefore, courts, you should essentially rezone parts of our town for us. We have a plan, I think, that is very well thought out. It's focused on transit-oriented development, and provides for development in places which and where we can be true to what our identity is, but at the same time, meet our affordable housing obligations and provide for thoughtful growth of the town. But just because we have this judgment, we have immunity from builder's remedy lawsuits, our work doesn't end here. We're now in the implementation stage, and we have done things such as not only adopted our Housing Element Fair Share Plan, which is part of the Town Master Plan, we've adopted a number of ordinances, we've adopted an Affordable Housing Spending Plan, which is required for use of the Affordable Housing Trust Funds, and we administer the program as well, by way of an administrative agent, who does the marketing and the application intake for the affordable units. And I always act... I also act as the town's municipal housing liaison, so I administer the program in-house here, in coordination with the administrative agent. Part of that implementation of our housing plan is that we are required every year to, at a noticed public meeting, a council meeting, in the month of February, that's why I'm here, that we discuss the efforts we're making to provide... to have 20 additional homes constructed by non-for-profit housing agencies. We are required to meet with them every year, and I'm happy to report to you that we have... Last year, I hosted an inaugural meeting with nonprofit housing organizations. It was well-attended. I actually had eight different development groups come in to meet with us. I explained to them what our housing plan is, what potential opportunities there may be, and what funds we may have available in our Affordable Housing Trust Fund to help them meet their goals. You should know, this was our inaugural meeting. They generate a lot of interest, and have had at least three requests for follow-up meetings by them. The non-for-profits are looking from the municipality, help with land costs. Transit-oriented development-type areas, like Westfield, are very hot right now, and land prices are skyrocketing and have been. So, they need help with when there's available land, if the municipality has to give to them, or sell to them for a nominal fee, or if there's ways we can use our trust fund dollars to help them buy down the cost of producing the affordable units, so they can maintain the affordability of those units they need to... they would like to build. Community support is also critical. So, we're very thankful that we now have a Westfield Housing Commission, some of the members I know are here this evening. If you could stand, because I haven't met everyone yet.
Please stand if you're in the Housing Commission.
Okay, great. So, we haven't officially met yet, but they're going to help us with this nonprofit meetings, and sort of getting things together, and seeing how we, as a town, can help not only fulfilling our obligation and getting these 20 additional homes built, but in other ways, perhaps, in implementing our housing plan. This annual meeting is also in conjunction with an annual report that I prepare, describing the efforts we've taken to assist nonprofit developers. That report, I believe, has been distributed to all of you. It also gets filed with the court and with the Fair Share Housing Center. This implementation is closely monitored by Fair Share and the courts. We... And to give you, sort of going beyond just the nonprofit piece of this, a lot else has happened in 2019, when it comes to our implementation of our housing plan. 339 West Broad Street, the old car wash cleaner site, they've gotten the certificates of occupancy. The affordable units in that project have been marketed, and application review is taking place right now. We see that the old Pan Am site, forgive me, I forget the name that they're calling that project, but that is currently under construction, that'll also have affordable units in it. Marketing of those units has not yet started, it's too early for that. We have a property at 244 Myrtle Avenue, which has been constructed by Ark of Union County for a special-needs housing that is complete, and they've been granted a certificate of occupancy, or issued a CL. 304 Myrtle Avenue, also by Ark of Union County, is currently under construction, that'll be completed this year. 321 Grove Street, which is the townhouse project at Grove and Myrtle, that is nearing full completion, and whereas that project does not have affordable units in itself, its obligation pursuant to settlement, that was approved by the court, is moved over to a project that would be constructed on South Avenue, on the same properties you're looking at tonight, to potentially designate as an area in need of redevelopment. Also, Ross Place, which is a 10-unit project, has site plan approval. That project as well, pursuant to settlement, does not have affordable units being constructed within it, but there's a payment in lieu being provided to the town, and that will go into our trust fund for usage to implement our affordable housing plan. So, community grants planning and housing, and I administer the day-to-day of all of this. It is a lot. When I started here in Westfield, I was very interested in working on the affordable housing bit, and I still am, but I could never have guessed the amount of staff time and effort it takes to keep everything moving. And this is something that just about every municipality is going through. I attend every housing session I can, at planners' conferences, or the League of Municipalities. I speak to other planning professionals, affordable housing legal counsel, and I can tell you with confidence, we're doing very well. I've heard some stories out there that I don't want to share with you, about what some other municipalities are going through, or what they've done or haven't done. I'll say it again, we are doing very well, and I'm pleased to say that, because this year, we're already at our midpoint review of our housing plan, believe it or not. It feels like we just started this, but we're already halfway through this round of housing regulations. So, I want to be sure I keep you all informed as we're moving forward. I hope I'm open to if I need some more assistance in terms of getting programs implemented or ordinances, that I can explain them to you, and you'll help us out with that. There's no action I'm asking you to take tonight. This is really just a status report to you. It's required per our settlement agreement with Fair Share and our housing plan itself. So, with that, I'd just like to give one public service announcement, if I may. If anyone who's watching online, or is here, if you're interested in applying for any of the affordable units we have, affordablehomesnewjersey.com is the website. And that is a link to the website, which is run by our administrative agent, and you can find a link to fill out a preliminary application, if you're interested in affordable units in Westfield, and they have other municipalities up there as well. But again, thank you for the support. We're doing very well. I met with John Drill, who's our Affordable Housing Council, last Wednesday, just being sure we're doing everything we're supposed to be doing, and getting ready for that midpoint review, and we're all right, I'm pleased to say. So, sorry, Matt, no crazy headline for you.
Well, many, many thanks, Don.
Can you repeat the website, please? Sure. The website is www dot affordablehomesnewjersey dot com. Thank you.
And is New Jersey spelled out?
New Jersey is spelled out the whole way. They like to keep you typing.
Great.
Well, great job, Don. Thank you for leading us.
Very, very good. Don, thank you for everything you do.
Yeah.
I just want to say thank you to Don as well. So, again, thanks to Don, and of course, the partner we have, our Ministry of Agent in Community Grants Planning and Housing, a very important part. And again, as Don mentioned, the members of the Westfield Housing Commission here tonight that can make it, they're going to be integral group, helping Don as we go forward, administer some of these meetings we're required to do, and getting involved in learning about our program. So, I want to thank you all for coming, who came tonight, Mr. O'Brien, longtime OC. And it's exciting to have a team of people, too, that will be volunteering their time to help us. So, again, this is... Don put it really, really nicely tonight, very simply, but it's very complicated. So, I just want to thank him again for his efforts, and thank you.
Thank you, Jim.
Great job.
Thanks. Now, I'd like to propose the following council appointments to the Special Improvement District Board. Owner-director Lillian Pien, through December 31, 2020. Operator-director Roberta Lowe, through December 31, 2021. Resident-director Michael Laplace, through December 31, 2020. And resident-director Bob Conway, through December 31, 2022. May I have a motion to accept council appointments?
So moved.
Moved by Councilwoman Mackey. May I have a second?
Second.
Seconded by Councilman Boyce. Any discussion? All in favor?
Yes.
Yes.
Opposed? The motion is carried. Mrs. Riley, do we have any advertised hearings?
Yes, Acting Mayor, there are three advertised hearings. The first is General Ordinance Number 2158, an ordinance to amend the Code of the Town of Westfield, Chapter 13. Anyone wishing to be heard on General Ordinance Number 2158, please come up to the microphone, state your name and address for the record. Seeing no one, Acting Mayor Hapgood, you may close the hearing.
This hearing is closed.
Next is General Ordinance Number 2159, an ordinance establishing the Human Relations Commissions for the Town of Westfield. Anyone wishing to be heard on General Ordinance Number 2159, please come up to the microphone, state your name and address for the record. Seeing no one, Acting Mayor Hapgood, you may close the hearing.
This hearing is closed.
And the last is Special Ordinance Number 2219, a special ordinance authorizing the sale of town property known as 320 Virginia Street, Block 5706, Lot 2, in the Town of Westfield. Anyone wishing to be heard on Special Ordinance Number 2219, please come up to the microphone, state your name and address for the record. And seeing no one, Acting Mayor Hapgood, you may close the hearing.
This hearing is closed. Councilman Dardia, please move for the adoption of General Ordinance Number 2158.
Thank you, Acting Mayor. I would like to move for the adoption of General Ordinance Number 2158, on second reading, an ordinance to amend the Code of the Town of Westfield, Chapter 13.
May I have a second?
Second.
Seconded by Councilman LaGrippo. Any discussion? Please call the roll. Councilman Parmally?
Yes.
Councilman LaGrippo?
Yes.
Councilman Katz?
Yes.
Councilwoman Mackey?
Yes.
Councilman Contract?
Yes.
Councilman Dardia?
Yes.
Councilman Boyce?
Yes.
Acting Mayor Hapgood?
Yes.
The motion is carried. Councilwoman Mackey, please move for the adoption of Code Review and Town Property Committee ordinances.
Thank you. I would like to move for the adoption of General Ordinance Number 2159, on second reading, an ordinance establishing the Human Relations Commission for the Town of Westfield.
May I have a second?
Second.
Seconded by Councilman Contract. Any discussion? Please call the roll.
Councilman Parmally?
Yes.
Councilman LaGrippo?
Yes.
Councilman Katz?
Yes.
Councilwoman Mackey?
Yes.
Councilman Contract?
Yes.
Councilman Dardia?
Yes.
Councilman Boyce?
Yes.
Acting Mayor Hapgood?
Yes. The motion is carried.
I would also like to move for the adoption of Special Ordinance Number 2219, on second reading, a special ordinance authorizing the sale of town property known as 320 Virginia Street, Block 5706, Lot 2, in the Town of Westfield.
May I have a second?
Second.
Seconded by Councilman Katz. Any discussion? Please call the roll.
Councilman Parmally?
Yes.
Councilman LaGrippo?
Yes.
Councilman Katz?
Yes.
Councilwoman Mackey?
Yes.
Councilman Contract?
Yes.
Councilman Dardia?
Yes.
Councilman Boyce?
Yes.
Acting Mayor Hapgood?
Yes. The motion is carried. May I have a motion to approve the minutes from the Town Council Conference Session, Executive Session, and Regular Meeting, on February 11, 2020?
So moved.
Motion by Councilman Dardia. May I have a second?
Second.
Seconded by Councilman LaGrippo. Any discussion? All in favor?
Yes.
Opposed? The motion is carried. Mrs. Riley, do we have any petitions or communications?
No, we don't.
Okay. Now, it's time for open discussion by citizens. Anyone may come up to the mic and speak to the council on any subject on which the council has jurisdiction. Please state your name and address for the record. Please state your name and address for the record, and limit your comments to ten minutes.
Hey, guys. Hi, I'm Emily Brute. I live at 738 Mountain Avenue in Westfield, and I, we were just listening about housing, and I'm going to talk about linens, so kind of fits in. So it's my volunteer partner, Amy Flax, who's also a Westfield resident. We do a furniture assist linen drive. This is our third annual. It will be starting March 1st. It will be going through until March 28th. We will be having bins at a few local Westfield businesses, and we're always looking for more businesses who may want to sign up to host a bin. And Amy and I, we're also looking for volunteers to help pick up, but we will be picking up. I'm just going to label or name the businesses that are, have already agreed to be drop-off sites, and many of you know them from the past two years. And so the first one is Caldwell Banker on Central Ave, Ron Bansky on East Broad across the street, Laura Brockway at Keller Williams on Elm Street, the library across the street from here, and our South Avenue site is the Westfield Eco Library. And Furniture Assist does help about 25 families a week. They get very, very low on sheets, so, and most of the families have about two kids that I hear from Joyce Friedman and other Westfield residents, so any sheets, even old ones, they will take. Last year, we gave hundreds because of all the wonderful Westfield residents, so we are going to try and even do better than last year if we can. So, yeah, you can, we will have the bins starting March 1st, which is, I think, Monday, right? Is that Monday? No, Sunday? Sunday. So you can find me on Facebook, give me a shout-out, Emily Louise Brute, if you want to help out, and you will see the bins all over town, okay? Thanks, yes.
Is it strictly sheets, or do you take towels?
We take towels, yeah. I forgot to say that. Part comforters, bath mats, shower curtains, and your old yucky sheets that you just don't think you can do anything with. We will also, our Furniture Assist will donate to a no-kill animal shelter, too. So, okay, so...
What was the name and the location on South Avenue?
Oh, it's the Eco Library, I mean, laundromat. I was saying that earlier. I've been calling library laundromat, but the Eco, so that's 341 South Ave, I think where...
Oh, is that next to Fujiyama?
It's next to Fujiyama, yep, so...
I think it's great that you're doing this.
Oh, thank you, yeah. So we always need more South Ave businesses, too, so, thank you, guys.
And what are the dates again that you can drop off?
March 1st to March 28th. So Amy and I go and pick up about every other day. If you guys want to drop off without us, you absolutely can. And Furniture Assist is on Commerce Street in Springfield, 24 Commerce Street, but the times are limited, so Sunday from 12:00 to 2:30, you can always go and drop off yourself.
All right, great.
Yeah?
Thank you so much.
Okay, thanks, guys.
Anyone else like to come up to the mic? Come on.
Don't encourage it.
Why not? Okay. Hearing no other interested parties tonight, I close this portion of the meeting and move to bills and claims.
This is the really exciting stuff. I'd like to move bills and claims in the amount of $255,558.81.
May I have a second?
Second.
Seconded by Councilman Magrippo. Any discussion? All in favor?
Yes.
Opposed? The motion is carried. Next on the agenda is reports of standing committees, beginning with the Finance Policy Committee. So I'll invite Councilman Contract to go through those in a minute, but before we do that, I wanted to take this opportunity to give Jim a chance to tell us more about our construction official, Frank Fuoso, who's with us tonight. Today is his second day.
Yes, second day today. So, yeah, thank you very much, Acting Mayor. So we wanted, we did it down the hall, want to do it publicly for the people on TV, on Facebook Live. As you all know, Steve Freeman, our longtime construction official, retired at the end of January. We've been doing a long search, and we actually chose Frank Fuoso, who's here tonight, a very longtime construction official from Somerville, New Jersey. Those who know Somerville, a lot of great things done there recently, and Frank was involved in a lot of those things, so we're very happy to welcome him to our team tonight. His appointment resolution is on the agenda, but he's already been here two full days, and he said it's good, and he came back for the second day, that's always nice. But I just want to introduce Frank. You want to come up, Frank, real quick, and just say hello and introduce yourself to the public? And many people will be seeing Frank a lot more out in the field doing inspections and many other things, so...
Thank you, Acting Mayor and Council. Now, not even close, a little vertically challenged. Thank you very much for the opportunity. I look forward to working with each and every one of you, with the residents of Westfield as well, the businesses, the developers, the affordable housing developers I hear tonight. So we'll welcome them all, and I hope to help make improvements to Westfield and the Westfield Construction Office as well. So, thank you.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
You're welcome, Frank.
Good luck.
No questions, or?
No, not tonight.
We did that already.
Okay, Councilman Contract, you're on.
Okay. Thank you, Acting Mayor. Hopefully, I'm doing a good job for you. There's seven resolutions. We'll move six as a package. The first is a resolution authorizing the CFO to refund dog license fee. The second is a resolution authorizing the CFO to draw warrants for participant payment to the Westwood for the annual Daddy Daughter Dance, which is a great event. A third is a resolution authorizing the CFO to draw a warrant for overpaid taxes for the year 2020. The fourth is a resolution authorizing the purchase of a recreation department vehicle, which is a bus primarily used for senior transportation. A fifth is a resolution to award a contract for redevelopment planning services, and the last one is a resolution to appoint Frank, our new construction code official.
Great. May I have a second?
Second.
Seconded by Councilwoman Mackey. Any discussion? All in favor?
Yes.
Opposed? This motion is carried.
I'd also like to move a resolution authorizing the CFO to make budget transfers.
May I have a second?
Second.
Seconded by Councilman Magrippo. Any discussion? Please call the roll.
Councilman Parmley?
Yes.
Councilman Magrippo?
Yes.
Councilman Katz?
Yes.
Councilwoman Mackey?
Yes.
Councilman Contract?
Yes.
Councilman Dardia?
Yes.
Councilman Boyes?
Yes.
Acting Mayor Hapgood?
Yes.
This motion is carried. Next is Code Review in the Town Property Committee. Councilwoman Mackey?
I have two resolutions that I would like to move as a package. First is a resolution to approve sidewalk café licenses, and the second is a resolution designating, designating an area of the town of Westfield, as more particularly described herein, as an area in need of redevelopment pursuant to local redevelopment and housing law.
May I have a second?
Second.
Seconded by Councilman Contract. Any discussion? All in favor?
Yes.
Opposed? This motion is carried.
I would also like to move General Ordinance Number 2160 on first reading, an ordinance amending the code of the town of Westfield, New Jersey, in order to require notification to the Downtown Westfield Corporation of building permit and development applications.
May I have a second?
Second.
Seconded by Councilman Magrippo. Any discussion? Please call the roll.
Councilman Parmley?
Yes.
Councilman Magrippo?
Yes.
Councilman Katz?
Yes.
Councilwoman Mackey?
Yes.
Councilman Contract?